Good evening, everyone. This is Katie Catchman. It's Wednesday, July 13th at 7:15. And I now open the Committee of the Whole, and we will begin with a roll call.
Obie?
Here.
Ellis?
Here.
Francie?
Here.
Jaken?
Here.
Catchman?
Here.
Lawrence?
Here.
Mackey? Morrison?
Here.
Perchini? Ross?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Shave?
Here.
We have no guest speakers tonight, so I will ask if any department heads have any updates to share. Director Barnum, hello.
Hi. I have an update to share. I'm going to share my screen. So I wanted to give you a heads up on something that I'll be bringing to the council at the next council meeting. So in downtown Aberdeen, we have these decorative light poles. And on the decorative light poles are banner arms for triangle banners. We've received a number of requests from, actually, there we go. We've received a number of requests from local groups, nonprofit groups, to hang banners, triangle banners, similar to this on our light poles in downtown Aberdeen. So I've worked with legal staff to put together a program for community event pole banners. This would allow groups to advertise for their events two weeks before the event. The groups have to purchase the banners themselves, hang the banners themselves, and then take them down. They would need to purchase the hardware for the base of the banner. All the poles right now just have the top arms for the banner poles. There isn't a charge to do this. And then if nobody else books it and someone has it booked for two weeks and your event still hasn't happened, people would have the opportunity to keep their banners up for a little bit longer. But I wanted to give you a heads up that I will be bringing this to you at the next council meeting. After I'm done sharing this presentation, I'll email you a draft of the community event, community event pole banner program so that you hopefully will have some time to review it before the next council meeting. And if you have any questions or comments, please do email them to me. And that's all that I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other updates from department heads tonight? Anything from you? All right, well, moving right along then. The mayor's report.
I don't have a mayor's report tonight.
It's been really fast Committee of the Whole.
I know, I knew you were gonna... Oh, boy, sorry. And lots of stuff happened this week, lots of meetings. We have everything going on from the biggest construction project, project you can think of to parking issues at schools that we worked on this week. But I could give a quick update. The roundabout is, they were actually ahead of schedule, doing real well. And they ran into an issue with a water drain pipe that was put in when the high school was built, the new high school. And it was a little, it was too shallow in the ground for this project. And so we had to take it up and redig the channel, which with all that extra stuff they did there, that put us back a little bit. So actually, we're ending up probably on schedule still with that project. So it was quite an event. They put a balloon in the pipe to stop the water flow because it just so happens that pipe flows water year-round. And one of the manhole covers further up the hill started boiling water out of it, which is totally unusual. So I started getting phone calls. Something's going on. The city's going to blow up or something. And because it was so unusual, and that's what it was, is they had to stop the flow of water down into the project until they got the pipe replaced. They figured it would back up some, but they didn't figure it'd cause any problems. And they, they were planning on pumping it out if it was too much. But at nine o'clock, or almost nine o'clock at night, one of the crew went down there and checked on it, make sure it wasn't flowing too badly. So that was kind of cool. They, they were right on the job. That's about it.
Looking through issues on the fly.
Yep.
All right, thanks for that. Do we have any non-standing committee reports from council tonight? Councilperson Ross?
Thank you. So on July 5th, I attended the museum board meeting. And just a quick report, the volunteers continue to make progress in cataloging, cataloging the artifacts and completed the data entry into past perfect. The volunteers are currently meeting on Tuesdays. They start about 9:30 in the morning, if anyone's interested. And that's at the current warehouse location where the artifacts are being stored. The board members in the city are continuing to work on a list of the requirements needed to bring that building up to code to allow for moving the artifacts permanently to the new location. We're looking forward to that happening. And we're going to go ahead and set up some displays in the windows to kind of attract attention to our new site and let people see some of the artifacts that were saved. And hopefully, that'll happen in the next month or so. Then on Wednesday, we held our first real estate committee meeting, which we were tasked to do last, last month. And we talked about the current ordinances. It's written and had some suggested changes, which Lisa's working with the attorney on that and will be bringing those to council in the near future.
Thanks for those updates. Any other updates from council members?
Well, it seems like forever ago because we've been so busy. But this year's Founder's Day Parade was absolutely fabulous. And the Splash Festival that was held at the Grace Harbor Historic Seaport was a wonderful partnership with Parks Department and Aberdeen Police Department Explorers and Seaport staff. It seemed to be really well-attended. People had a lot of fun. Fireworks were great. I also went to the Fry Creek Groundbreaking on July 7th. And wouldn't you know, all these dignitaries there and the clouds burst open with a good downpour. We all headed for cover under the trees. And it was a nice time to visit with some of our elected people and be a part of that historic event for the city. I went on the tour afterwards so got to see the whole layout of where the levy is going and asked a lot of questions to learn more about that. So that was really, really helpful.
Thank you. Any other updates? Well, that wraps up the Committee of the Whole, and I will hand things over to the mayor for the council meeting.
Thank you. This is Mayor Shave, and it's Wednesday, July 13th, 2022, at 7:25 PM. And I call the Aberdeen City Council Meeting to order. Deputy City Clerk, will you please take a roll call?
Obie?
Here.
Ellis?
Here.
Francie?
Here.
Jaken?
Here.
Catchman?
Here.
Lawrence?
Here.
Mackey? Morrison?
Here.
Perchini? Ross?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Shave?
Here.
Thank you.
Mayor Shave? If we could just note for the record that councilperson Lawrence and Francie are joining us remotely tonight. And then I would also make a motion to excuse councilmembers Mackey and Perchini.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to excuse councilmembers Mackey and Perchini. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next, let's move to the flag salute. Bobby, would you like to lead us in the flag salute tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I move we approve the minutes as presented.
Ellen, second.
Motion was made seconded to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Any discussion?
Mayor Shave?
Councilmember Shaw.
I'd like to offer an amendment to reflect that under the discussion of the gateway, Councilmember Shaw was recused during the discussion and the vote.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to include in the minutes that Councilmember Shaw was...
Recused.
Recused from the voting on the gateway issue.
There was actually no vote on it, but it was discussion.
Discussion.
There was a vote. When you look at the minutes, there was a vote to cable it to a workshop. It all took place out of my presence.
The workshop, I see, okay.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
One more for minutes as corrected. I move we approve as corrected. I'll second.
Motion was made seconded to approve the minutes of the previous meeting as corrected. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any additions or deletions?
Mayor Shave?
Councilmember Shaw.
Public Works would like to offer a motion to remove Public Works, Public Works Report Number Two, awarding the Fry Creek Pump Station project.
Second.
Okay. Motion was made seconded to remove Public Works Item Number Two, the Fry Creek Project, from the agenda at this time. Any discussion?
Mayor Shave?
Councilmember Shaw.
For the council's benefit, I'd just share that a bid protest was received by staff right before the deadline late this afternoon. Out of an abundance of caution, staff is recommending that the city of Aberdeen should not award the project tonight. Staff will work through the process. As such, we are recommending removing the award of the Fry Creek Pump Station project from the agenda until the award can be legally considered. We're respecting the rights of the bidders, and there is a several-day process to go through. So that being said, we are now rallying to construction season. We respect the right of the appeal, but staff also wants to avoid delays if we are to begin this project this year. So with that said, Public Works is asking council to remain flexible in case there is a need for a special meeting next week.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item Number Two be removed until another council meeting. Okay. Any public comments?
Mayor Shave, really quick, were you planning to make appointments tonight for the homeless?
Yes.
On homeless list?
Yes.
Is it on there?
On it. It's under appointments. I'm just adding it. Why didn't, why didn't I say that?
He's adding it now. This is a request of you.
So we need a motion to add an appointment for the mayor for the homeless committee, as well as an appointment for the real estate committee.
Yeah, I was thinking we did need to...
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made seconded to add appointments of two members to the Home Housing Committee, Homeless Housing Committee, and one appointment to the Real Estate Review Committee. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now we'll move on to public comments on agenda items. Please try to keep your comments to three minutes.
I'm Karen Clark from Wardport. And I would have called you mayor, but I just ran out of time the last few days. But I'm just up here to speak for Dave Golding for the fire department. And I'd like to put in a good word for him. I don't know him, but it'd really be nice to see someone hired from within who has the support of, of the people of the firehouse and someone whose family's already here, who's really come up through the ranks and done an excellent job. And he has the support of everyone there. And I thought it was, you know, part of the job of the former fire chief since he's going to be a consultant for the next six months. He can bring them up to speed with financials, financial statements and such, or the budget. So I'm sure he'd be a great candidate for this position as a new fire chief. And the other person in question, John Clark, we hear that he has a reputation of moving around the lot and, and not such a great person in relationships with other employees and other fire department people. So it'd be nice to see someone hired from within and not from without, who may not be here very long. So I hope you would reconsider hiring someone outside of the Aberdeen area.
Anyone else? Okay. Move on to Finance Committee. Committee Chair Report from Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you, Mayor. Finance Committee, slides, yes. Finance Committee met tonight at 6:00 PM. And we have two reports, both relating to computer data issues. And, and both are needed to bring the city into compliance with state public records requirements and to make sure we've got plenty of data storage. So I'll just jump, oh, jump right in. I'll jump right in to approval of expenditures. Oh, I move to approve the expenditures.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to approve the payroll and expenditures. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, roll call vote, please.
Good job.
I do that every time.
You got it right last time. Motion to approve accounts payable in the total amount of $1,774,862.38 and payroll in the total amount of $948,705.09. Check numbers 25543 through 25546, 77923 through 78148, and wires 1363 through 1366 and 1368 through 1369. Obie?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Francie?
Yes.
Jaken?
Yes.
Catchman?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion approved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right into reports. A report from the finance and the finance director recommending that the mayor be authorized to sign the contract with Matrix at the initial cost of $7,299 for the first year and $5,319 for each subsequent year. I move we adopt this report.
I second.
Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
The second report from the finance and the finance director recommending that the city council accept a bid from Tech Connects in the amount of $62,541 for 36 terabytes of storage, allowing the city an approximate five years of additional storage. I move we adopt this report.
I second.
Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Any discussion? I think it's under discussion. I think it's just about five years since the last time we upgraded. So this is an expensive thing. We knew it was coming.
So, Mayor, I think all we're doing is we're buying ourselves a little time, and hopefully, we can use that time to address and become more streamlined and bring our system forward into the, into the future. Because right now, this is just a Band-Aid. And so I've been encouraged by some of the people I've been talking to as staff that that's the goal, is to have a longer-term solution. This is buying us some time, and it's a Band-Aid.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And that's it from the finance committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Public Works. Committee Chair Report from Councilmember Shaw.
Thank you. Under Committee Chair Report, I'd just share that I also was able to attend the Fry Creek Groundbreaking. And the mayor was there. There was actually a very broad contingent of local, state, and federal leaders there, from the governor to Senator Mary Cantwell and Representative Derek Kilmer. And I just want to share with those councilmembers who weren't there, the level of commitment that these leaders shared about seeing this project through with us was kind of choked me up a little bit. I mean, they were very, you know, they're, they're on board, and they want to see us get this done. And it was very, very encouraging. And this is just the first $18 million step in what's going to be a multi-year process. And hopefully, we can get going on that this summer and with, and get our little kinks worked out. So with that said, the other announcement that was made is a few weeks ago, maybe it was at our last meeting, this council agreed to cover the gap. You know, we're dealing with some inflation and everything, and there was a $2.5 million gap. Well, without batting an eye, at its last meeting, the Chehalis Basin, Office of the Chehalis Basin approved that $2.5 million to cover the gap that has happened in the, in the last couple of years so that we're not going to have to do a loan to, from ourselves to cover the Fry Creek project. So that also was good news that the governor shared last week. So moving on to reports, we have a report from Public Works and the Public Works Director recommending that the mayor be authorized to sign Amendment Number Four, to Task Order Number Four for construction services when the agreement has been finalized. The fee for Amendment Number Four shall not exceed the amount stated in the scope of work, which is $362,028. I move we adopt this report.
Second.
Thank you. Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item Number Two has been removed from the agenda, so we'll move on to ordinances. We have the second reading of Bill 2209, an ordinance vacating the alley between lots five and six and seven and eight, block 37, Denz Platte, Section 9, Township 17 North, Range 9 West, West Meridian, in response to a petition from the Grace Harbor Transit Authority. I move that we approve the second reading.
Second.
Thank you. Motion was made seconded to approve the second reading of Bill 2209. Or any discussion?
Mayor Shave? Some councilmembers and others might remember, might know that the second reading is usually our public hearing,
hearing, but we had a public hearing on this matter earlier, so it's not included tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Under discussion, this is part of the transit project. And we'll see this summer, the transit, removing that building on that corner. And they're going to build a whole new designed transit station here in Aberdeen. So there's a lot going on in this city. A lot of nice things happening. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor Shave?
Yes.
I would like to consider the second reading, the third, on Bill 2209 and place in final passage.
Second.
Okay. Motion was made and seconded to make the second reading of Bill 2209, the third reading, and place it on final passage. Any discussions? Seeing none, all in favor, roll call vote, please. Third reading.
Obie?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Francie?
Yes.
Gaken?
Yes.
Cashman?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bertini?
Ross?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
That passes ten to zero, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor Shave, that's everything from Public Works tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Shaw. Public Safety Committee, committee chair report tonight from council member Ross.
Thank you, Mayor Shave. Public Safety met this evening at 6:30 here at City Hall. And as a committee, we had some discussion about some various things going on regarding public safety, regarding thefts downtown, some of the issues surrounding the homeless in the downtown area. And so those are things that we're going to be trying to work on over the next few months. Also, public safety's been tasked with working on the situation regarding the halfway houses that are popping up in certain neighborhood and we're going to look into seeing what options the city has regarding those. So that was a lot of the discussion after the reports from the chiefs. So first of all, from the Aberdeen Police Department. So they're currently down five personnel, which makes shifts kind of hard to cover, but they're making do. They do have a new police officer, Sawyer Roden, who will be starting Monday, July 18th, and he'll be sworn in at 11:00 a.m. on the 19th of July. He doesn't have an academy date yet, I believe it'll be sometime in October. They have two additional candidates who are in the background investigation portion. So hopefully they'll be getting some more candidates soon to get their roster up to where it needs to be. The activity report for June was 3,256 calls. That's an increase of 13% and the highest month in history of their entire data system. So for all the years they've been keeping track, that's the highest number of calls they've received. So they continue to be very, very busy. National Night Out is coming up on Tuesday, August 2nd, and Ross Lamke's in charge. If you'd like to have them visit your neighborhood, be sure to let him know and you'll get included in the stops for the evening. Also, the non-emergency 9/11 call usage. The 911 center is very, in very critical staffing levels. They have eight. They're scheduled for 21. So they are very, very busy and overworked. So the police department is encouraging people with non-emergencies to call the non-emergency number or use the online reporting system, which is located at www.auburdeenoa.gov, and scroll to the police department online reporting. And then again, you can also call the station with your non-emergency. The VIP have reported a little over 800 hours year-to-date. They continue to do a big service for our local police department and they're very much appreciated. Also, with the traffic changes downtown, a lot of people are using Think of Me Hill as a bypass. And we're reminding you to be cautious. It's a slow windy road and it's not a race course. And we need people to be careful when they're using that to get, to avoid the downtown changes. So moving on to the fire department. So the call statistics for June 2022, they received 522 calls for the service in the month of June, and that again continues to be high. The Cosmopolis Fire Department call statistics were 13 calls for service to the city. The fire service specialist in June made 10 home visits and installed 13 smoke alarms. She also did 10 public service assistance for referrals and was able to refer some of those patients to the care that they needed. The fireworks sales, there were four consumer retail sales tents for 2022 that this process entails application reviews for compliance with state and local regulations. Also, the fireworks display for Splash was reviewed and they also were required to get a permit. But everything went really well this year and there were no huge issues. There were three fireworks-related calls on the 4th of July. One was for a fire that was caused from fireworks put in a trash can before they had been properly cooled down and started a fire. And then two medical calls, but nothing real serious, which the numbers were down this year, which is good news. Also, another reminder, Washington State fallen firefighters memorial service for the Aberdeen, or for engineer Chad Middletlider will be on an honorary this year, and that's on August 14th. And there is a press release that's gone out and we'll get that posted on the website. And down the road, the Aberdeen Fire Department is looking to get a third-party service to check building fire systems for commercial use. We'll be getting more information on that later. There's no cost to the city, but it will help us make sure that everybody's in compliance because it requires an annual review. So that's it for public safety.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just for the record, Bill 2209 will now be ordinance 6685.
Oh, thank you. Also, means we're on public safety. I'd just like to note our police chief, Pro Tam Dale Green, sitting here next to me. I promised not to make him sit up here all the time, just so everybody could see him this first night. Welcome, and it's good to see you sitting there.
Thanks for having me, I appreciate it.
Okay. Any special agenda items? Yes.
Yes, we do. First, we have a report from personnel and the mayor recommending that the city council adopt the recommendation of hiring John Clark effective immediately with an anticipated start date of August 1st, 2022. I move that we accept this report.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded to accept this report. Is there any discussion? Under discussion?
Just a couple items to note here so that everybody knows. The background check is still underway for Mr. Clark. So this is pending the background check. And Director Smith is actually on vacation today, but she had sent me some information regarding the hiring process that I was going to share, so council had the information as well. But we had received resumes and cover letters from eight different candidates. They were reviewed by Director Smith, former fire chief Hubbard, the McLean Black Lake Fire Chief Leonard Johnson. Seven out of eight of the candidates were selected to move forward to the next step, which was three essay questions. These were again reviewed by the same group. And one candidate withdrew as they were offered another position with a different department. Four others were invited to interview and one withdrew after receiving the interview invitation. So it brought us down to three candidates that moved on to the interviews. The interviews took place over a two-day period, which is June 21st and June 22nd. On June 21st, each candidate attended a casual meet and greet at the fire department with department staff. It was opportunity for staff to ask questions and get to know the candidates on a professional and personal level. It was informal only and there was no scoring at this meet and greet. And the next were a series of several panel interviews. Each candidate attended a 60-minute interview on the first one, asked a series of questions. And at the end of the interview, it was scored with the results being the number one pick for John Clark. And then there was a second interview with two fire chiefs from neighboring counties, the AFD IAFF Union President Ryan Klein, AFD Battalion Chief Troy Palmer. Each candidate attended a 60-minute interview, asked a series of questions, and again given the opportunity at the end to ask questions of the panel. The interview was scored and the results were number one for John Clark. And then the final interview took place on June 22nd. It was the mayor's panel, which consisted of Mayor Shave, council member Casey Morrison, Hope We Am Fire Chief Matt Miller, Hope We Am City Administrator Brian Shay, and Cosmopolis City Administrator Darren Rains. Again, it was a 60-minute long interview with a series of questions and opportunity at the end to ask questions of the panel. And the interview was scored and the results again were number one scoring for John Clark. So the recommendation was made to hire Mr. Clark. And like I said, he's currently undergoing the background check. That's anticipated to be completed by his start date.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Did we have two nays, it sounded like? Okay. Motion carries.
And next, under appointments, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you.
To do your appointments.
Tonight, I would like to appoint to the homeless housing committee, business member Pat McDonald from Northwest Surplus, and also member-at-large Stephen Arms to the committee. Who would like your approval?
Just for the record, I'd like to correct that. His name's Patrick McDaniel.
What did I say?
Pat McDonald.
I've known Pat for years. Don't tell anyone. Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Thank you. Motion was made and seconded to approve. Is there any further discussion? Under discussion?
As a member of the committee, I really appreciated all of the interviews and there, I believe we interviewed a total of seven individuals for both the at-large position that we were looking for and the business committee member. And every single person brought so much to the table and it was really a hard decision and a lot of times a split decision between the committee of who we recommended for appointment. So I really appreciate everyone that threw their name in the hat and took time to talk to us.
I would also note that the mayor didn't take part in this. This was, the committees, committee did all this work themselves. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Secondly, I would like to appoint Katie Cashman to the real estate review committee.
I so move.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Mayor Shave?
Yes.
To clarify, are we appointing the council president to the real estate review committee or council member Cashman in particular? I thought there was some discussion in order for ease of, you know, future reference to have the council president serve on that. Do we appoint her now, but then bring in a change to the ordinance? I'd like to offer an amendment that we bring in a change to the ordinance to have the council president serve on that committee.
Lisa Scott has.
I think she's working on that.
Yeah, we sent the proposed changes off to the city attorney. And so Hillary, when she's got a chance, will review that. I know we've got her pretty swamped right now. So right now, it would be to appoint Katie Cashman to the board. And then, once the ordinance changes are made every year thereon, it would be the council president.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is public comment period. Anything the public wants to comment about? Please try to keep your comments to three minutes. Come on up to the podium. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to city council comments. Anybody on the city council have a comment? Wow, this has got to be a record getting out of here early.
I have a quick question for the minutes for the meeting. When council member Shaw made the motion to strike the Fry Creek decision, was there a second read on that? Or was I, I didn't hear it? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, Josh did it. Okay, anything else from council? Council member Ellis?
Yeah, I was curious to know if we've heard back from legal on the Gateway Center management contract?
No. Lisa?
Yeah, we received the value from the lease agreement yesterday and I sent that off to Hillary. So again, I know we've got her pretty swamped, but she will review that and let me know there was, it was kind of a two-faced, it was kind of a weird answer to that, where the answer could be yes and no. So we're trying to put a value to what that lease is and as soon as we get that answer, we'll get that back to you as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else from council?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded to adjourn. If there's no opposition, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you. Record breaking.